City Planning Commission Meeting, this is Thursday, November 13th. And we have two different items on the agenda tonight. We have an open public hearing to consider the adoption of the proposed Downtown Master Plan. This is a recommendation to the City Council. And another open public hearing to consider the implementation of the Tax Increment Financing Plan for Tax Increment Financing District Number 13. This again would move to the City Council based on recommendation.
Actually, I would clarify that you are actually making some findings-
Right.
-with regard to the tax increment financing.
Yeah, and I'll add that as when I ask for a motion-
Okay.
...so that we can make sure that we have it properly. So, thank you for that, Holly. So, before we begin though, let's go ahead and take a look at the approval of the minutes from October 14th, 2014 meeting. If we can take a look at those, let me know if there's any changes or additions. And if not, then I would call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the-
Okay, I'll go-
Second?
If that's okay. Okay, so a motion to approve as written by Commissioner Kime and a second by Commissioner Hurst. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, minutes are approved. So now, we will go ahead and move to the first open public hearing to consider the adoption of the proposed Downtown Master Plan by the City of Austin.
Okay, I brought a lot of materials with me trying to anticipate everything that might come up. This is a very dense document. There's a lot of information here. I will kind of highlight some of the background and what we are reviewing is essentially making a recommendation to the City Council as to whether to adopt this plan as a guidance for our future land use policy for our downtown. The original Downtown Master- well, we have a comprehensive land use plan from 2000. And then we had another- we had a Downtown Master Plan that was completed in 2005. And then the Austin Main Street Project was integral in guiding and planning and administering those programs and projects to revitalize Austin's downtown. And then in 2014, we hired CR Planning and SEH Inc. to do an update to our Downtown Master Plan. The development of the plan took place between June 2014 and October 2014. The CR Planning did a lot of community outreach, did a lot of meetings. In June, they had a kickoff meeting with community leaders and volunteers. In July, there was a tour of the downtown, what they called their reconnaissance. In August 27th, they presented a straw man plan for further discussion and comments. In October 8th, they presented a draft plan to the public. And then October 20th, they presented the plan to the City Council at a work session. And then that brings us to our current presentation before the Planning Commission. Minnesota statute requires that any amendments to our comprehensive plan or any land use plans be reviewed by the Planning Commission and that a recommendation be made to the City The purpose of our plan, this Downtown Master Plan, is again to make decisions for long-term desired outcomes in downtown Austin. The plan provides several guiding principles. It identifies downtown influence areas. It identifies downtown transportation availability and discusses possible improvements. Always, they're discussing improvements, things that we have indicated to them as a community that we would like to see in our vision of what would be a vibrant and productive downtown Austin. They identify a downtown core area, and then they develop strategies for implementing the desired future downtown. Some of the specific areas of interest that were identified at the community meetings were downtown parking and the possible need for a ramp. They talk about evaluating options, costs and benefits of centralized parking near the downtown that will make parking predictable and fully utilized, open up scarce land for redevelopment, and improve tax base and potentially provide covered parking for downtown residents. Those are just some things that they suggested we look at if that was something that in the future we thought would be appropriate. It's not something that we have to do, it's just a suggestion and a way to go about doing that in a informed manner. Some of the other things that were discussed were pedestrian facilities and alternate modes of transportation, specifically bikes and pedestrians. They also recommended a downtown- excuse me, a downtown organization that would be either a loose or formal group that would guide some of these recommendations into fruition or make them happen in our downtown area, having a specific organization that is, I guess, keeping up to date on what's happening with the downtown area and trying to look at it in a comprehensive way and so one person's not doing one thing in this area and another person in another area. They also looked at- or some of the other areas the community identified were the redesign and redefining the use of the Fourth Avenue Northeast Corridor. Their suggestion that was to make that more of a cultural corridor and also to include more greenscaping and green infrastructure in that area. And also, that brings us then to another issue was urban forestry and green infrastructure and sustainability in the downtown area. And they also have many, many, many recommendations for how to implement those specific areas of interest, and they also have, like I said, the specific strategies which also tie in with the things that the community had specifically identified as areas of interest. Some of the things that are in here didn't come up a lot at the community meetings necessarily, but they're just things that would make the downtown plan more comprehensive and connect it to all of the areas that are of influence and would fit with our vision for redevelopment of the downtown area or preservation of the things that we want to keep. Do you have any questions? I don't have anyone here from CR Planning to present any further information.
Just a couple clarifying points. It's my understanding that this is the first part of the comprehensive plan editing and that we'll continue and do comprehensive plan updates on other neighborhoods, which happened to start with downtown. So, if folks are in other districts, then they can be assured that that's coming.
Right. Our state statutes provide that we can identify specific areas or specific types of land use development that we can focus in on and provide additional plans for other areas of the city. This particular plan happened to focus in on our, what we used to call our central business- or we still call our Central Business District from our 2000 Comprehensive Plan. And that there was, I think, with the Vision 2020 and some of the other things going on in Austin, more of a focus on our downtown area and a desire to update our plan for the downtown area.
But the whole comprehensive plan is also due for an update?
It is, yes, yes. And it would- it is recommended in our downtown plan that we do update our comprehensive plan. And there would be some zoning and land use changes, possibly some ordinance changes regarding, you know, large to small things from parking to what areas are zone residential versus recreational, things like that.
And then, my other question is just a layperson's question, which is, this is a plan that we refer to. It's not a law on the books that requires us to do or not do anything. It's a plan that we refer to when we're making decisions. Is that correct?
Correct. It's a plan that we refer to in making decisions. However, any decision that we would make that might conflict with this plan would then be a consideration in moving forward, and that could possibly be, you know, an issue or a reason to not develop something that's not in agreement with the plan. But yes, it's- we're not stuck with anything that's in here. We don't- and it's really written in a way that provides recommendations more so than this is what we're going to do. It just provides some strategies for if this- if you want this versus this, these are some of the things that you should do. For instance, they talk about creating appropriate green infrastructure standards for greater downtown and the downtown core. And then they have options. Austin can take steps to improve its streetscape in the downtown area through green infrastructure design and development. Options include- and then they list five things. One is considering adding appropriate tree species, biodiversity, rain gardens, and other green infrastructure throughout downtown. Softened surface parking lots with increased vegetation around the perimeter where appropriate. Plant and maintain trees and other vegetation along Main Street and Fourth Avenue corridors to attract visitors to the core area. Improve visual appearance of residential areas with added green infrastructure. And use green infrastructure to improve river connections to various destination points throughout downtown. So there, they give you a variety of options that you could either do all of them or none of them, or pick and choose which you think is appropriate or feasible. Thank you. You're welcome.
I have a question. That was a pretty wieldy document.
Yes.
So, I was trying to pick up highlights and whatever, but I wanted to get some more information on the Fourth Avenue Cultural Corridor. What were their recommendations? Just some of them, I don't need all of them, but I mean, what were they thinking in terms of doing when they were talking about a cultural corridor? I don't mean to put you on the spot there.
No, that's okay. I've been through this thing a few times, but it may take me a second to find the specific-
Holly, is it okay if I speak to that a little bit?
Oh, sure.
I happen to be part of the process, and the discussion was to bring Fourth Avenue to have sort of the look and feel of Maine. So, it's a little bit more of a strolling street. They talked about traffic calming techniques and more wider sidewalks, more green space, those sorts of things. So, and I'm sure Holly's gonna find that and say the exact same thing.
Yeah, right here, here we go.
I think the plan was to kind of slow the traffic down on that street because it's generally used now as a kind of thoroughfare from east side to west side. So, I think-
Yeah, it is.
-the point was to look at how we would slow traffic down and to the point of making multi-modal or walk and walking and vice versa.
For reference, we have it on page 6-25. The Cultural Corridor Vision, it says here, "A pedestrian-oriented mixed-use corridor with entertainment and art-focused businesses. Public spaces and uses and high-quality urban-scale housing mixed with other uses. The corridor includes protected historic structures and historic designs along its entire length. Pedestrian and bike gateways open to Mill Pond and to both banks of the Cedar River. The street design characteristics should promote walkability and emphasize slower vehicle speeds." Which- and then it lists, I think we've got, there are five goals listed, if you want me to go through them.
No, I just- I thank you Laura, because I think that was what my question was.
And what was mentioned is part of the goals, some of the strategies to slow traffic down and slow the speeds down.
Right.
They also talked about Second Avenue might become more the corridor to get across the neighborhood and over the bridge, over the river, where you would know that Fourth was a slower street and not choose that if you're- unless you're going to Fourth. So, that was the idea.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions for Ms. Wallace?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think I attended most of the sessions with Brian Ross, and I think the whole process was good. I think it was very good. I think the input, the meetings were conducive to gathering input, and the product, I think, was generally a good plan. I think the challenge, like you said, is, you know, picking out the things that would work for us and that we wanna build on. But overall, I would say, a lot of work went into it, a lot of good help, and I think it turned out well.
Yeah, and I don't know if the lack of public here tonight is any indication that they feel informed about this project or something else, but there were quite a few meetings, and I attended a few of them myself. And I agree, the document is very thorough, and I appreciate the attention that the group that produced this for us, CR Planning, put into this and SEH.
I would say, one of my favorite things about the plan is that it defines sort of a greater downtown, because I think that's been a sticking point even with the work of the Main Street Project. Is this building in downtown or not? And so now, we have sort of a greater downtown border, and we have this idea of the core and the fringe, and I think that's gonna help us moving forward with the area to sort of have a basis to offer the same benefits to, you know, as appropriate without wondering where the borders are all the time, so.
And if you had any additional recommendations, or you wanted to recommend any changes to the Downtown Master Plan update, you're welcome to do that. Otherwise, you are making a recommendation to the City Council whether to adopt the Downtown Master Plan.
Right. And I would like to say too, you had talked about the downtown organization.
Yes.
Which, you know, Vision 2020 has the downtown destination, which has started just wonderful things down there. So, I think it's forward-thinking that when Vision 2020 comes to a natural close, that we still have some kind of a downtown organization that still has the benefit of the downtown area in mind, and that we don't lose what we started with Vision 2020, and that we just continue to keep that ball rolling, and that it's something that's thought of as something that is a permanent kind of organization so that we can always be thinking. So, I appreciate that they've put that in there. Any other input or questions or anything? If not, then this is a recommendation to the City to consider the adoption, or not consider the adoption, of the proposed Downtown Master Plan according to what motion you would like to put forth, but at this point, I will ask for a motion.
Well, I will make a motion to proceed with the recommendation to the City Council to proceed with the Downtown Master Plan, the final draft that we have.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Kime to consider the adoption of the proposed Downtown Master Plan by the City of Austin pursuant to Minnesota Stat 562.355. And do I have a second?
A second now.
We'll have a second then, from Commissioner Holly. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes then. This is a recommendation to the City.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on then with the next open public hearing to consider the implementation of the Tax Increment Financing Plan for Tax Increment Financing District Number 13 pursuant to Minnesota Statute 569-174 and 569-1799 inclusive.
All right. In the packets that you receive, there is a several-page document titled by the same name that you just read from the agenda. And that is the Tax Increment Financing Plan that is proposed. The additional materials are supporting materials. The findings of the Oak Park Mall redevelopment TIF district were prepared by John Erickson, who is here tonight. That was prepared as part of the actual basis for meeting the statutory requirements for developing a TIF plan. One of the requirements is, and in the executive summary on the findings of the Oak Park Mall redevelopment TIF district, it says scope of work and the necessary findings are that the structurally- that the buildings are structurally substandard, that they contain defects or it contains defects which are sufficient total significance to justify substantial renovation or clearance, and to evaluate that the cost to bring up the structure to new standard exceeds 15% of the replacement costs. The conclusion of that report was that the parcel did meet the required findings that qualifies redevelopment district, and then that was supported by the attached findings and exhibits. The- I might need the- I have my- do I have to stand? Stand in front of it? In your documents, if you have them, on page 14 is an outline of the area for the proposed Tax Increment Financing District. The area outlined in red is the proposed Tax Increment Financing District. You can see it goes around, it's hard to tell what they are from an aerial view, but just outside the red line is Shopko. And then on the inside is the Oak Park Mall. The duration of the TIF district would be 25 years from the date of receipt by the City of the first tax increment. The purpose of the TIF district is to redevelop an area, redevelop or develop an area where that would not happen otherwise on its own. The proposed project includes the redevelopment of property that would include demolition of a portion of the existing Oak Park Mall, which has been deplanted and obsolete, and subsequent new construction of an approximate 60,000 to 90,000 square foot retail facility. There would also be some significant public improvements associated with the redevelopment of that site. And again, the City determined that the redevelopment would unlike- be unlikely to occur solely through private investment within the foreseeable future, based on, partly based on the analysis that Mr. Erickson did. The area is currently in what we have in the Comprehensive Plan, the 2000 Comprehensive Plan listed as arterial commercial district, and the area right now is zoned as B2 commercial. The plan development would also be the same type of development that would be appropriate The, let's see, Planning Commission is, despite, you know, all the things that are going into your- talking about how the taxes work and how they be collected and how the district is formed, the reason that this is coming before the Planning Commission is so the Planning Commission can look at that Tax Increment Financing District and make a determination as to whether the proposed development fits within the city's plan for land use as a whole, and whether the current zoning in that area is appropriate for the proposed I don't have any further- anything further to add, if you have any questions. Mr. Erickson and Mr. Dankert are here, if you have any questions.
I don't think this is a gray area. Seems like you're redeveloping it for the exact same zoning and purpose that it was.
Right.
So, do you- is this a recommendation to the City Council?
You're actually making findings that are required by statute for the development of the TIF plan. You'd actually- you could do two motions, or you could do one motion that incorporates each finding. The Planning Commission needs to determine whether the TIF plan, which is that large document that you have, conforms to the general plan for the development and/or redevelopment of the city as a whole, and whether the TIF district is properly zoned to provide the maximum opportunity for the development or redevelopment of the property.
Any other questions or comments? Anything from Mr. Dankert or Mr. Erickson?
Well, yeah, it just seemed like, Laura said, it's just kind of replacing, I'll say, or just kind of making re- implementing.
But way better.
Way better. Improvement, I'll say, yeah, it's a great improvement. So, certainly that's, you know, that's a great, I think, a great thing for that area. We all know it's needs to work. So, yeah, I think it's a great plan.
Okay, it sounds like we're ready to make a motion. So, one thing I would like to recap, and this is what Ms. Wallace was saying, is that when considering a motion, if you could look at your cover sheet, pretty much the verbiage that you can use is pretty much made out for you. Depending on how you choose to make your motion, whether you find a motion that the Commission has found or has not found that the TIF plan conforms or does not conform to the general plan, if you could refer to this verbiage and make a recommendation to the City Council, that would be helpful when making the motion. So, if you all have that in front of you and you're prepared, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion.
Are we gonna draw straws here?
To start out with, the Austin City Planning Commission has found, we'll move from there.
Are we doing one motion, or are we doing?
It depends on how you choose to- You can do it as one.
Make the motion, yeah.
The Austin-
I'll cheer you on.
-City Planning Commission has found that the TIF plan conforms to the general plan for the development and/or redevelopment of the city as a whole, and for this reason, we'd like to make a motion to recommend to the City Council for this, as well as a motion to- a motion that the district is properly zoned to provide the maximum opportunity for development or redevelopment of the proposed project by private enterprise. So, these two motions.
So, you have done that in one motion, and I appreciate that. So, you are then considering the implementation and saying that we have found that it is something that is appropriate.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Hurst.
Do we need to mention that it's pursuant to the statute?
You do not.
Okay. So, then we have a motion to the affirmative by Commissioner Hurst, and I would like to find there is a second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kime. So, therefore, we have found that the Austin City Planning Commission has found that the TIF plan does conform, and we would like to move this forward to the City Council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay.
I don't see anybody else here.
I don't see anything else. So, if there's no business that you need to apprise us of, then I will go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Nothing further.
So, moved.
So, moved from Commissioner Holly-
Second.
And second from Commissioner Hurst. -and second from Commissioner Hurst. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.